And at this time I'll ask Roberta to do the roll call.
Thank you. Supervisor Bennett?
Here.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Michaels?
Here.
Supervisor Plam?
Yes.
And Supervisor Park?
Here, thank you. And this morning we are honored to have Lieutenant Ferguson Harris from the Naval Base Ventura County to lead us in our moment of affirmation. So Lieutenant, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and give us some words to start our morning, thank you.
I just want to thank you for this opportunity. Let us pray. Eternal Father, we are thankful to you for granting this country the power and prosperity that guarantees our freedom. We are also appreciative of this country and county's citizens who value the sacrificial service of our armed forces. Because of this, we ask you to bless each and every activity that takes place in this meeting. May every activity demonstrate the many thank yous expressed to those who are serving our country at home and who are deployed abroad. We ask this in your name, amen.
Thank you for that. I know that we're celebrating Military Appreciation Day today. With that, let us do the Pledge of Allegiance and Supervisor Long, would you like to lead us?
Hand over heart, ready to give.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'd like to suggest a move to both the minutes of May 2nd and continue the minutes of May 9th.
Second. You have a motion and a second, and thank you for giving those minutes to us. Seeing no objections, that passes. We're now at agenda review, and Mr. Johnson, do we have any changes to our agenda?
We do not.
I think that's three in a row.
Right.
Pretty amazing.
We're on a roll.
Must be the leadership.
We're either getting more accurate or my proofread even starting to stop.
Okay, it might just be old age then. Item so, okay. Item seven is our consent agenda items. Got a motion and a second, seeing no objections, that passes, and we'll go now to our, one of our favorite times in the meeting, our public comments. And this is, we have four speaker cards, and our first is Barry Zimmerman, followed by Carol Dean Williams.
Good morning, I'm Barry Zimmerman, Director of HR, and today I'd like to come and present an award, basically recognize the county and make you aware of some awards that have been granted to the county. At the annual Business Leadership Summit, they provide the Work-Life Awards and recognize entities throughout the county, both private and public, of the work that they do towards creating an environment that is harmonious, both with work and family. We have been recognized as a family-friendly employer, and this is the fourth year running, so I think that's quite an honor to do that. This is a project that is sponsored, is called Project Work-Life. It is a public-private joint collaboration sponsored by the Workforce Investment Board, the Ventura County Economic Development Association, First Five, and the Orkla Family Foundation that promote these ideals in good employers. This year, we established policies and procedures to accommodate a work-family environment in our administrative manual, of your board approved earlier this year, and through programs that we've implemented. We've also were recognized, that we received a letter from the governor who recognized our effort as well as our Representative Audra Strickland. And so I'd like to, I'll present this, so you can take a look at that, but more importantly, I'd like to recognize Debbie Bergman. If you would stand, please. She is the main force in this effort here for the county to promote work-life and policies that make it possible to have a productive work environment and also deal with many of the family issues and situations that are, that impact our employees' lives, whether it's childcare, elder care, other family dynamics and so forth, and has done a tremendous job there, and like to recognize her for that. She also participated in the summit as a panelist of four, and did a tremendous job as they opened that up to questions on how we best implement our policies in the county and so forth, to share that with the business community. So there we have it, we're proud to receive it, and we'll continue to make efforts to be recognized in the future for our efforts there. Any questions that you may have?
Congratulations.
Again, thank you. It's good to be able to have a work-family environment where our workers feel very comfortable and we are able to do things as well as we can for the families of our workers. Thank you. Our next speaker card then is Carol Dean Williams, followed by, yes, Albert Egger.
Good morning, Carol Dean Williams. Next Tuesday, I'll be a 61-year resident. Yeah, 60, if I live that long. And I'd like for you to recognize me. Thank you, thank you. I kinda saw something in this multiple choice. I'd been going through Ordinance 4322 with a fine-tooth comb, and now Kathleen Wilson is missing, but it's reported that you can spend millions of dollars. There is no cap, there is no limit. And let me read you section, excuse me, 1262, Purpose of the Ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance is to promote public trust in governmental institutions and the electoral process. Reduce the appearance of corruption. Reduce. It didn't say eliminate, it said reduce. And the reduction was that you couldn't spend over $159,000. That reduced corruption. Now the ordinance allows you to spend millions and bring back the corruption, and to prevent individuals or organizations from using their financial strength to corrupt.
You have a microphone, so you don't need to yell, Mr. Williams.
To corrupt Ventura County government by creating political debt through contributions or expenditures. Multiple choice. How many people does it take to be dumb? One, two, or see more? Multiple choice question two. How many people does it take to be stupid? One, two, three, or more? Well, in case you didn't get it right, the first one is it only takes one person to be dumb, but it, the question two, but it takes three board supervisors to pass an ordinance to be stupid. And I reserve my time for other items.
Our next speaker is Albert Egger, followed by Penny Dane. Good morning, Mr. Egger.
For the county record, well, it certainly appears to be the case, and I can smell a stench from the bench in regards to some of the supervisors that currently preside on this board. First, the Bahia boating community wants to extend our gratitude and thanks to Supervisor John Flynn for his valiant presentation to the California Coastal Commission last Thursday in Costa Mesa in not supporting the outrageous and unreasonable fee increases and changes that are ongoing, oppressing, and destroying our boating community as I speak. Again, thank you, Mr. Flynn, for all you have done to help the local boating community. On the other hand, Kathy Long, consider yourself on notice and under the scrutiny of investigation in our boating community, along with your cohorts that preside on this board in regards to the outrageous and unreasonable fee increases being implemented by Almar under the guise of Randy Short. You know, the managing operations entity this board has illegally and unconstitutionally awarded the transfer of Bud Smith's lease, with the locality being the Chal Islands Harbor. Blacks Law Dictionary Sixth Edition defines public interest, something in which the public or community at large has peculiar interests, i.e. relating to the money economy, or some interests by which their legal rights or liabilities are affected. It does not mean anything so narrow as mere curiosity or as the interest of a particular locality's which may be affected by the manner in question. Interest shared by citizens generally in affairs of local state or national government, case like Russell versus Wheeler. If by public commission one is making use of public property, and he can be the only one whom the public can deal with respects to the interests of that property, his business is affected with a public interest which requires him to deal with the public on reasonable terms. The circumstances which close a particular kind of business with quote "public interest" unquote has to be subject to regular unquote has to be subject to regulation. This must be such as to create a peculiary close relationship between the public and those engaged in it, and raise implications of affirmative obligation on their part to be reasonable in dealing with the public. One does not devote his property or interest to public use or close it with a public interest, merely because he makes commodities for the sales to the public in common calling, such as that of a butcher, baker, tailor, etc., case like Charles Worth Packing Company versus Court at Public Industrial Relations. The cesspool of greed and unreasonable control this board has unleashed as an instrument in injecting Almar, the robber barons of boating, to tax the current boaters out of their homes in recreational boating by increasing the liveaboard fees 164 percent a month for a person on a thirty-five-foot boat. Bigger boats pay more. In a period of only seven months to date, if this board believes this is dealing with the public reasonably, you are morons. But we are not yet, but we aren't done yet, because a hard increase has to be assessed to a thirty-five-foot boat as well, under a performance fee program, again unreasonable. Then let's not forget, the money is only part of it. Almar sports itself as controlled freaks with the appearances of Nazi-type tactics to make the average boater feel like, well, unwelcome at best. If Almar and Randy Short had their way, they would boot out all the liveabords and notice the remaining boaters to pay their outrageous and unreasonable fees and stay away because they, they, the boaters, are nuisance, cluttering and wearing out their precious docks. Wow, look what is happening today. Almar, the great robber barons and boating Nazis of the West Coast, sent forward by this board of publicly-elected thieves and lawbreakers to rid Channel Islands Harbor of any common boaters and secure said premises for the wealthy Marina Del Rey culture.
Could you please sum up, Mr. Egger?
Who are waiting like vultures to eat out the substance of the common boaters who are citizens of this and surrounding communities? I'm curious, board members, is this a reasonable way to deal with your public?
Your time is up, Mr. Egger.
Yeah, I'm almost done. Board members, the gig's up. Our boating community knows now what you diabolical slayings are up to.
Thank you, Mr. Egger. Have a beautiful day. Our next speaker is Penny Bane, and that will be our last public comments speaker.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Mr. Johnson, board members, good morning. Good morning. I'm here on behalf of the lessees of the Channel Islands Harbor to thank this board for your perseverance and your ongoing diligence and your eye on the ball moving forward with a harbor that is in dire need of repair and renovation, and the lessees who are willing to put approximately $100 million of their own private sector money into this harbor speaks volumes of their trust that they have in you to manage this, this project. So again, thank you, and thank the Coastal Commission for their wisdom in seeing that this is a harbor that has great value, and we serve all of the people at that harbor, not just the boaters, of which I am one, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to getting a report about our harbor and our status on things now. Our next item on the agenda is our board comments, and how about we start on the left and move to the right this time. Supervisor Michaels, would you like to begin?
Yes. First of all, I would ask the board to adjourn in memory of these citizens from the fourth district who have passed on and will very much be missed. And on your dais, oh, lost mine, there it is. I picked these up last week at the nurses' lunch. I brought some and put them on the dais. This artist is in our healthcare agency. He's a pencil artist, and he's trying to get out in the world, and I just thought this talent needed to be recognized, and he, he gave these away, just in order for people to, to see them. It's incredible work. I used to own an art gallery, so I can judge it, and it's excellent. So, my congratulations to him. We had a wonderful lunch with the nurses at the hospital last week in honor of Nurses' Appreciation Week, and Supervisor Long was there, and I didn't see anybody else, but I didn't stay the whole time. Our CEO was there. So, again, to our nurses, congratulations, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Supervisor. Michaels, Supervisor Bennett, would you like to go next?
Yes, I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I'd also like to point out to the board and to the public that on May 31st, from 3:00 to 5:00, the Ventura County Public Health will be having an open house at their Healthcare for Kids Center, 3147 Loma Vista Road, and that's part of our whole effort to try to provide access to low-cost or no-cost healthcare for teens and children in Ventura County, be part of our single point-of-entry enrollment, and that's May 31st, from 3:00 to 5:00, and just another sign of us making progress and moving forward. The program has rolled through the Santa Clara Valley and now is expanding to Ventura and ultimately to Oxnard. The other thing I'd like to do is thank Supervisor Long for spending a long day down at the Coastal Commission, representing the board of supervisors at the Coastal Commission last Thursday. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair? Yes, Supervisor Michaels?
If I could add one thing, last week, it's in relation to Supervisor Bennett's announcement, and that is that last week at the Simi Valley Street Fair, our healthcare agency was there, and they brought all of their programs, and in particular, they had the Healthy Kids Program. So, they are out trying to spread the word and get people to know and understand the system. They had, they had, I believe, great attendance at their booth. They happened to be right across from me, and so I watched all day long, and they did a great job of working with the parents and, and all of the community, so they are getting out there.
Thank you, Supervisor Michaels. Supervisor Flynn, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you very much. Ask the board to adjourn in memory of the individuals on this lease, on this, excuse me.
Freudian slip.
On this, yeah, a big one at that, on this sheet. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. I have a list to submit for adjournment memory also, Fort One Eme and Camryale residents who will certainly be missed by the community. Couple quick things just to mention. I know that all of you have received information on the, on the May revised budget, and a lot of good news that comes out of it, and I think the best news is that at least the governor and the leadership are looking at one-time funds for one-time use and not long-term expenditures, so I think maybe they heard us. We'd like to say that, but there's a lot of details in it, but I think that it is good news, and I'll continue to work with CSAC and the Roman County Caucus as we see how these things move through the legislative process for support and, and action on the budget, as I know our managers and our CEO will do the same. But it's really nice to have some good news coming out of the May revise, as best as it is. I did, I was able to clear my calendar and attend the Coastal Commission hearing, and it was four and a half hours of, of good interchange with the Coastal Commissioners. They asked some good questions, I thought our staff did an outstanding presentation in their PowerPoint and in their, the Q and A with the commissioners, and addressing the questions that were raised by opponents or folks who were questioning some, some pieces of the Coastal staff's recommendations. And you will certainly get a full report from the harbor director, but at the end of the day, I felt very good, both about the staff work that was done in preparation for it, the presentation, the strong showing of support that we had from harbor leaseholders and from yacht club representatives and from boaters and from folks that we didn't know were even going to be there, speaking in support of investing in the harbor and moving ahead with this project. And to say that the vote was unanimous on both requests that was put forward to the Coastal Commission. And there, there are some conditions that didn't surprise anyone, part of the staff work that was done, so as it is brought back to this board, I think that we should all be very proud, both of, of the staff work that was done in preparation for this, but that the Coastal Commission really did take their time and due diligence and, and listen to both the pros and cons and questions and concerns, and then acted unanimously in support of the, of the, of the request for the Public Works Plan Amendment and the project. So, I was pleased to, to be there, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I wanted to let the board of supervisors know that I have received some feedback on a vote that we took to do sweeping of Santa Rosa Road prior to the Cano Valley, bicyclists cruising the Cano, and heard back that before sweeping, parts of the shoulder were impassable, forcing us into the road in a few dangerous spots, but there were no safety incidents along Santa Rosa Road this time, and I've heard from a few cyclists that were really happy to see that it was swept, so it had an effect and it was spout, so that's good. Also, there was a, a small blurb in the Ventura County Star, one of four so far, regarding the City of Thousand Oaks claims regarding subsidizing county residents and county services. But I wanted to point out, what the article today was talking about was how the majority or the greatest chunk of money that the city is claiming they are subsidizing county residents with is regarding the library, library funds. So, I just wanted to share that the, our library system does have an agreement with the City of Thousand Oaks for library system property tax revenue generated in the unincorporated area of Thousand Oaks to be, be returned to the City of Thousand Oaks. And our staff has said since that agreement was done in 1999, $1.7 million has gone to the City of Thousand Oaks for those residents to use the library. And that, it reads that payments have continued under the agreements with the City of Thousand Oaks in spite of the poor financial position of the Ventura County Library. In the early 1990s, while laying off some 40 percent of staff, payments continued. Now, even though the library revenue is up, we still have six libraries that are open 25 hours a week or less, but all during that time, payments were made and continue to be made to the City of Thousand Oaks, and I hope the checks are going to the right place. But they do have a fantastic library system there. I also wanted to say I had the pleasure with Supervisor Michaels of attending the groundbreaking for the widening of the 23 freeway, a project that we have been long needing, and I'm glad to see it finally getting going, and we'll have a few years of construction and then be able to have some congestion relief with the addition of that extra lane and kind of put it out there to do our, what we can, to see that we don't fill it right back up again with more congestion by assisting both in development decisions and also in alternative transportation options. And then also was able to attend a wildland fire prevention celebration out in Bell Canyon, an appropriate place after being able to see all those homes saved out in Bell Canyon, and Kevin Eubanks with the Tonight Show Band was there, so got to meet him. But it was a good event, and really wanting to emphasize with residents how important that defensible space is when you do the brush clearance, how very important that is both to protect their property, but also to protect the firefighters when they're out there trying to protect their property. They need that defensible space, looking at 100 feet now, and in some areas, you really need to go to a couple hundred feet, so we're really proud of our residents for upholding that, and it is, we are probably one of the few counties that actually enforces that, and we can tell the difference, so. I'd also ask that we adjourn in honor of the people on this list in my district, and then also point out that today is a special day. The first woman to climb Mount Everest is the anniversary of that today. It's also Henry Fonda's birthday. It's also Liberace's birthday, and it's International Sea Monkey Day. Okay, with that.
I thought of sea monkeys.
We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, and that will take us to our regular agenda and go to item number 28, and this is with the Department of Airports. Good evening, good morning, and if you'd like to give us your report.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Supervisors, Mr. Johnson, Todd McMe, Director of Airports for the county. This item is for the purchase of two properties directly adjacent to the Oxnard Airport on the north side, basically to help us establish our, or better comply with our required safety area. It's an object-free area. We need basically another 100 feet to the north. You can see the two properties, one in kind of a purplish color and one in a blue, Hollander and Rucker. We used two separate appraisals on this and then a third review appraisal to set the price. This is a prescribed procedure with the FAA, and we hope to, in the future, come back with some discretionary money from the FAA to purchase the 100 feet along the northern border for the rest of the area, where it's not developed, particularly to the east where the homes are on Little Farms Road, and then to acquire some navigation easements to get us fully compliant here in the future. A lot of great work done by Dave Jackson, the Real Property Services of Public Works. It's really spearheaded the effort for us, and that would be the staff report.
Second. Thank you for the report. We have a motion from Supervisor Flynn, second from Supervisor Michaels, and seeing no objection, that passes.
Thank you.
Good work.
Yes. And our, our next item is item 29, and this is a General Services Agency item regarding application for a grant. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Mr. Johnson, Teresa Lubin with General Services Agency. The item before you this morning is requesting your board approve the Director of General Services Agency to apply for a grant under the California Department of Fish and Games Fisheries Restoration Grant Program. The grant would fund a concept development plan that would study improvements for the San Antonio Creek Crossing of the Ojai Valley Trail. The crossing last year during the winter storms was filled with debris and sediment and made, was closed for approximately eight months. This study would hopefully look at some different alternatives that would improve fish passage and keep the trail in a safer condition during future winter storm events. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Move approval?
We have a motion and a second. Seeing no objection, that passes. Thank you for the report. It is nice to see going for grants. Item 30 then is a report on the closure of the trust fund of the Norwegian grade, and Mr. Britt, here on this item.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Mr. Johnson. This is just a receiving file item, the action you've already taken back in 2002, and I think we've tried to present as comprehensive a report as we could, given the history, the expenditures from the trust fund, the current balance is zero, and in accordance with the direction of the board, the fund has been closed. And to answer any questions, if you already.
Second, we have a motion and a second. I note that when the funds going into the Norwegian grade trust fund ended, we then began a TIMF fund. Currently, when you build a residential unit in the Santa Rosa Valley, $3,000, about $3,000 for each unit goes to the City of Thousand Oaks, and was it about $50 goes to the County of Ventura, both for our roads, so there's certainly some agreements to continue road improvements as a result of development in that area. Thank you for the report. Having a motion, second, seeing no objection, that passes, and Mr. Johnson has a comment.
I just wanted to comment to the board that this was placed on the regular agenda, primarily because of the recent comments in the paper from the City of Thousand Oaks regarding Norwegian grade and other areas where they believe the county supposedly needs to reimburse or restore money to the city. In that same story, they said that Mr. Mitnick would be contacting us belatedly, but he was supposed to be contacting us. We still haven't heard from anybody, but we put it on the regular agenda in case the City of Thousand Oaks wished to be here to make any further comment regarding Norwegian grade.
Thank you very much for bringing that out, and certainly this was an agreement that was made a while ago, back in 1999, I understand, and funds, the, most of the funds all went for the realignment of the Moore Park Road out of that fund.
The, the area contribution was established in 1981. There was never any agreement with the City of Thousand Oaks. It was all an area contribution as directed by this board. We have met, but the only agreement with the City of Thousand Oaks is the current reciprocal agreement that we currently have with them, which was approved, I believe, in 2002, and we still have that agreement with the city, and it is ongoing. we still have that agreement with the city, and it is ongoing.
And all the funds that went into that account, they only came from the unincorporated area, as they're all unincorporated?
All the funds collected in the account, a little bit over $200,000, were from development in the Santa Rosa Valley. We discontinued collecting any monies into the account in 1993, or excuse me, 1995, by direction of the board as the countywide traffic impact ordinance was implemented and became operational. So any money that was accumulated in the fund, it came from Santa Rosa Valley or from interest that accumulated to the money that was on deposit in the fund.
Okay, and now the funds from Santa Rosa Valley can go directly to the City of Thousand Oaks to work on their roads, the $3,000 per unit?
The funds in the reciprocal, per reciprocal agreement that are transferred to the City of Thousand Oaks will be used by the city in accordance with their traffic impact ordinance.
Thank you. Clarify some things. Our next item, then, on the agenda is item 31. This is a Watershed Protection District item regarding emergency contract authority. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Supervisor, Mr. Johnson. I'm here before you. For the record, my name is Peter Shea. I'm with the Watershed Protection District. I'm here before you to report on the use of emergency contract authority by the Director of Public Works. This authority is being used for two projects currently. It's the Santa Paula Airport at Santa Clara River, also Pole Creek Emergency and Pre-Bas. The airport is about 70% done currently, and the Pole Creek project is about 50% done. And I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions or a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you for the report. Seeing no objection, that passes.
Keep at it.
Yes, looking forward to completion. The next item on this agenda is from Supervisor Flynn, and this is item 32 regarding the appointment of a El Rio Mac alternate.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion and a second, and seeing no objection, that passes. Now move on to item 33 on our agenda, and this is from our probation agency regarding proposed Plan for Substance Abuse Crime Prevention Act.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mr. Johnson. Terry Warnock from the probation agency. I'm sorry, I just rushed over here.
Take a minute, catch your breath.
I'm here today because we're submitting our Prop 36 county plan for fiscal year '05-'06, and what I wanted to do is just mention a couple of the goals that we have for this year, rather than talking about what's in the board letter itself. And our goals are to continue the smooth transition as lead agency in the plan this year. I think we've had a good start, moving from transition from behavioral health to the probation agency as lead agency, and we'd like to continue that. Second, one of our goals this year is to generate revenue through Drug Medical in the hopes of, as you know, we've lost quite a bit of money with the rollover funding, and so to generate additional funding is very important for us to keep the program going. And the third goal is to create efficiencies in accountability and data collection so that our case processing will offset the funding decrease as well. Two other things that I'd like to mention that have happened recently since the submission of this board letter is one that Mr. Remington and Mr. Johnson traveled up to state ADP earlier this month and had a very successful meeting with the state ADP regarding the transition from behavioral health to probation. And second, that Mr. Remington presented Prop 36 to the grand jury just a few days ago, and again, received positive feedback. So we've received positive feedback from both the state ADP and the local grand jury. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any questions you might have in the board letter. Thank you.
Move approval?
We have a motion and a second for approval. Thank you for the report. I was actually able to speak with a Los Angeles Superior Court judge who was discussing this program and how difficult it is for most around the state to be able to get really good compliance in this. So I know you have a huge uphill battle and appreciate the efforts, and we look forward to having some benefits from that. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just some comments, too, that I appreciate the good work that probation is, with the board's direction, jumped in, take lead on this, and with full cooperation of all the agencies who sit around that table. I think we listen to the concerns of the agencies, we listen to the grand jury. I think the Quick Start Assessment Center was just a very good move.
It's really been fabulous.
We know it will make such a difference to capture those folks before they get outside the door. So I think it's an excellent report and redirection and moving it forward. Good work. I know it took a lot of work, a lot of quick work, too.
I think it'll continue to take a lot of work over the course of this next year.
Yes.
Supervisor, again?
I'd like to echo those comments, and I think we all recognize this is really challenging, and we just have to have good professional work being done by lots of people working collaboratively. You guys have taken that next step, and be really anxious to see in another year how this all unfolds. But the Quick Start certainly makes a lot of sense, the summary probation, the reports that you're going to get regularly, hopefully will keep us all on top of us and stuff. So good luck and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that motion does pass unanimously. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, just like to make a couple of comments. One, to thank the probation agency, but also the healthcare agency for cooperation on the transition. And what Terry said about the rollover financing, that's sort of a technical term, or maybe not so technical, but just so that it doesn't escape your attention, what in effect had occurred is as the program started, not all the money that was originally appropriated by the state was spent in the first and second year, and that was the money that was rolled forward, and the healthcare agency, mental health, was working on this. They, in effect, were running on what we term a structural deficit, that is, they were financing current program operational level out of prior year's income that was not recurring. That was one of the unpleasant challenges that the probation department got when it transferred over. There wasn't, or very little rollover money was left, and so Michelle and Terry and Cal had to get busy and sharpen their pencil and figure out a way to continue the program and then to start looking for new sources of income. So when one inherits a program and then inherits it with a little short on funds, it makes it twice as difficult, so they should get an extra thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that's a great report and good opportunity here. Our next item, then, is our correspondence agenda.
Move the receiving file.
Motion and a second. No objection, that passes, and we have some time before we go into our time certain items at 9:30. Will that be sufficient to do some things in closed session, take care of our closed session items? Do you anticipate any announcement?
One or two announcements are likely.
Okay, but maybe not after 15 minutes. It might take a little bit more discussion. We'll see. All right, thank you. So we'll go to our closed session and then be back for our 9:30 time certain. Thanks.
First with the announcement from closed session, Mr. Claylon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. By a vote of four to zero to one, the Board of Ventura County Watershed Protection District ratified the filing in the Ventura County Superior Court of a petition for an order permitting entry on the property of Dabney Lloyd LLC. The district seeks the order so that it can evaluate the feasibility of constructing a debris and detention basin for the Arundel Baranca on Dabney Lloyd's property in Lake Canyon above the city of Ventura. The basin, if feasible, would mitigate the possibility of flooding. The petition became necessary because Dabney Lloyd declined to voluntarily permit entry. In the second matter, by a vote of five to zero, the Board of Supervisors has authorized participation by the county of Ventura as namicus curiae on behalf of the county of Fresno in the case of County of Fresno versus Fresno County Deputy Sheriff's Association, Fifth District Court of Appeal Case Number F-049691. The case is an appeal by the Deputy Sheriff's Association of a Superior Court judgment for the county. The dispute in the case is over the meaning of the term "any year" in the statute that controls calculation of final compensation under the county employee's retirement law for the purpose of calculating an employee's retirement benefits. The Deputy Sheriff's Association contends "any year" means an employee is entitled to choose any 26 bi-weekly pay periods throughout his or her career to calculate final compensation. The county successfully contended in the trial court that "any year" means a period of 365 consecutive days. The county of Ventura will join in supporting the county of Fresno's position. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and then we'll move on. Before our first 9:30 supervisor, Bennett wanted to make the announcement.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all the people being here, and I just wanted to alert you, some of you just want to make sure you're aware that at 10 o'clock, if you're interested and available and staying, will be a presentation of the hatching of the first bald eagle chick on Santa Rosa Islands and the Channel Islands in the last 50 years. And there's a possibility they're going to have some remarkable photography, and that they don't know until this morning. So I won't know until they get here at 10 o'clock, but they've actually put some live cameras out there, and we may be able to see some live, have some live looks at this chick, and now a second chick has hatched out there. So it's a remarkable thing going on out the islands. It'll be our last item, it'll be at 10 o'clock this morning, in case you're interested in staying. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So our first 9:30 item then will be a Board of Supervisors Resolution, and it proclaims May 2006 Elder Independent Adult Abuse Awareness Month. And I know Mr. Myers and Ms. Rivera is here for that, and I'll go ahead and read it, and then if you'd like to speak. It reads that whereas each year hundreds of thousands of older, frail, and vulnerable American citizens are abused, neglected, and exploited by family members and others, and this is a crime that no one should ignore, and whereas in California, adult protective services responded to 55,645 reports of abuse of elders and to 29,897 reports of abuse of elder or dependent adults last year, and in Ventura County, adult protective services responded to more than 1,650 reports of elder or dependent adult abuse during the past year. And whereas whether the abuse is financial, physical, emotional, or basic neglect, our senior citizens and disabled adults have the right to protection under the law even from members of their own family. And two-thirds of abusers are family members, generally a child or spouse. And whereas although California has laws against elder and dependent adult abuse, the incidence of reported abuse have increased by 33% over the last five years. And as baby boomers become senior citizens, it is imperative that all aspects of society become aware and informed of the issues surrounding this sensitive topic. And whereas all citizens, especially our most vulnerable citizens, should be able to live safe, secure lives without fear, neglect, pain, or exploitation, and in an effort to raise more knowledge and understanding, Ruled Elder Abuse Awareness Day will debut in 2006. And it reads now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the county of Ventura does hereby proclaim May 2006 Elder Independent Adult Abuse Awareness Month in Ventura County and encourages all residents to learn about adult abuse and what can be done to prevent it. I'm sure you're going to let us know specifically the phone number that we can call is 805-654-3200, day or night. And Mr. Myers, if you'd like to come up, I'll come on down and present this.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Mr. Johnson for recognizing May as Elder Independent Adult Abuse Awareness Month. This is a very important issue and a growing issue in our society. We don't even know exactly how many victims there are. It's been growing, as the proclamation states, but many times it's a hidden kind of abuse. This is a test, I think, of our society's commitment to personal freedom, family responsibilities, and taking care of each other, and our own civic responsibility in looking out for vulnerable members of our society. We do have legislation pending, AB 2657 in California is before the Assembly right now, and we also have S-2010 at the federal level, the Elder Justice Act, trying to address this issue legislatively. We're all getting older, the population is aging, and we need to, or many of us, and Mr. Johnson and I were talking about yesterday, of being in the sandwich generation, taking care of our children as well as elders, and we need to show that respect for our elders. I'm very proud of our adult protective services staff, they're trained professionals, they are incredibly sensitive and skillful in intervening in these situations, they partner with the district attorney and law enforcement, our public guardian, it's a great partnership here in Ventura County, we're very proud of them. And to tell you a little more about that is Ms. Judy Rivera.
Hi. Thank you, Ted. Good morning, members of the Board, Mr. Johnson. First of all, I want to recognize our agency's adult protective services staff who are here today. That's Kathy Young, Marcy Snyder, and Kathy Salewagner, if you all would stand. The adult protective services department has a staff of 14 to cover the entire county. Therefore, it's really important that we have all of our citizens aware of this nearly invisible problem that happens throughout our society. Typically, only one in five cases are reported, meaning that there could be more than 6,000 that go unreported, so we need everybody's eyes and ears open. Elder independent adults from all walks of life can be victims of abuse, individuals that are isolated from society with little outside support are particularly vulnerable. It's important to know that no single agency or discipline has all the resources or expertise required to effectively resolve all forms of abuse and neglect. A variety of agencies and programs are required. This collaboration is necessary for the safety and protection of elder and dependent adults. So today, I'd like to extend some special thanks to our community partners who have joined us today, and I'd like to introduce them to you as well. Would you please stand when I call your name? First of all, we have Gregory Totten, District Attorney for the county of Ventura. Larry Matheny, County Tax Collector. Monica Neese from the Area Agency on Aging. Shawna Atchison from Behavioral Health. Shirley Hayton, Deputy District Attorney, DA's Elder Abuse Unit. Joyce Swingler, DA Victim Services, District Attorney's Elder Abuse Unit. Katherine Dugan from the District Attorney's Office. Sylvia Taylor Stein and Kim Bryan, Long-Term Care Ombudsmen. Paula Osterbrink from the Mental Health Board and Chair of the Mental Health Board's Older Adult Committee. Marilyn Scott, Public Guardian. Susan Lauren, Kathleen Lithicum, Barbara Kula, and Chris Sharak, Public Health Nurses, who were with our ladies. Finally, I'd like to introduce to you today Shirley Floyd. Shirley is a local victim of financial abuse, and she's graciously agreed to tell her story to you today.
My name is Shirley Floyd. I'll be 89 in July, and I live in a skilled nursing facility known as Oxnard Manor. And I wanted to say good morning to you, Chair, and the best of you gentlemen. And before I tell my sad story, I'd like to thank two police officers who were very helpful, Mr. Klein and Mr. Valeska. And without Joy, I don't know where I'd be. And then at my skilled nursing facility, there's Jody, she's sitting in the audience also. They've just been great, and I've been very well supported.
Madam Chair, could we just, yeah, I'm not sure people can hear.
I have no, I'm afraid I'll forget.
Would you like me to hold this so you have your hands free?
Thank you. I have been asked to come here today to share my story. My story is probably very not new to you, but it's grand new to me. And there was a friend who helped- And as baby boomers become senior citizens, it is imperative that all aspects of society become aware and informed of the issues surrounding this sensitive topic. And whereas all citizens, especially our most vulnerable citizens, should be able to live safe, secure lives without fear, neglect, pain, or exploitation, and in an effort to raise more knowledge and understanding, Ruled Elder Abuse Awareness Day will debut in 2006. And it reads now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Ventura does hereby proclaim May 2006 Elder Independent Adult Abuse Awareness Month in Ventura County, and encourages all residents to learn about adult abuse and what can be done to prevent it. I'm sure you're going to let us know specifically the phone number that we can call is eight oh five six five four thirty-two hundred, day or night. And Mr. Myers, if you'd like to come up, I'll come on down and present this.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Johnson, for recognizing May as Elder Independent Adult Abuse Awareness Month. This is a very important issue and a growing issue in our society. We don't even know exactly how many victims there are. It's been growing, as the proclamation states, but many times it's a hidden kind of abuse. This is a test, I think, of our society's commitment to personal freedom, family responsibilities, and taking care of each other, and our own civic responsibility in looking out for vulnerable members of our society. We do have legislation pending, AB 2657 in California is before the Assembly right now. And we also have S 2010 at the federal level, the Elder Justice Act, trying to address this issue legislatively. We're all getting older. The population is aging, and we need to, or many of us, and Mr. Johnson and I were talking about yesterday, of being in the sandwich generation, taking care of our children as well as elders. And we need to show that respect for our elders. I'm very proud of our adult protective services staff. They're trained professionals. They are incredibly sensitive and skillful in intervening in these situations. They partner with the district attorney and law enforcement, our public guardian. It's a great partnership here in Ventura County. We're very proud of them. And to tell you a little more about that is Ms. Judy Rivera.
Hi. Thank you, Ted. Good morning, members of the board, Mr. Johnson. First of all, I want to recognize our agency's adult protective services staff who are here today. That's Kathy Young, Marcy Snyder, and Kathy Salee Wagner, if you all would stand. The adult protective services department has a staff of fourteen to cover the entire county. Therefore, it's really important that we have all of our citizens aware of this nearly invisible problem that happens throughout our society. Typically, only one in five cases are reported, meaning that there could be more than six thousand that go unreported, so we need everybody's eyes and ears open. Elder independent adults from all walks of life can be victims of abuse. Individuals that are isolated from society with little outside support are particularly vulnerable. It's important to know that no single agency or discipline has all the resources or expertise required to effectively resolve all forms of abuse and neglect. A variety of agencies and programs are required. This collaboration is necessary for the safety and protection of elder and dependent adults. So today, I'd like to extend some special thanks to our community partners who have joined us today, and I'd like to introduce them to you as well. Would you please stand when I call your name? First of all, we have Gregory Totten, District Attorney for the County of Ventura. Larry Matheny, County Tax Collector. Monica Neese from the Area Agency on Aging. Shawna Atchison from Behavioral Health. Shirley Hayton, Deputy District Attorney, DA's Elder Abuse Unit. Joyce Swingler, DA Victim Services, District Attorney's Elder Abuse Unit. Katherine Dugan from the District Attorney's Office. Sylvia Taylor Stein and Kim Bryan, Long Term Care Ombudsmen's. Paula Osterbrink from the Mental Health Board and Chair of the Mental Health Board's Older Adult Committee. Marilyn Scott, Public Guardian. And Susan Lauren, Kathleen Lithicum, Barbara Kula, and Chris Sharak, Public Health Nurses, who were with our ladies. Finally, I'd like to introduce to you today Shirley Floyd. Shirley is a local victim of financial abuse, and she's graciously agreed to tell her story to you today.
I'll be eighty-nine in July, and I live in a skilled nursing facility known as Oxnard Manor. And I wanted to say good morning to you, Chair, and the best of you gentlemen. And before I tell my sad story, I'd like to thank two police officers who were very helpful, Mr. Klein and Mr. Valeska. And without joy, I don't know where I'd be. And then at my skilled nursing facility, there's Jody. She's sitting in the audience also. They've just been great, and I've been very well supported.
Madam Chair, could we just, yeah, I'm not sure people can hear.
Would you like me to hold this so you have your hands free?
Thank you. I have been asked to come here today to share my story. My story is probably very, not new to you, but it's grand new to me. And there was a friend who helped me when my husband developed cancer, and while he was in hospice, he helped me. He helped me write checks. He took me to the hospital. He ran errands. And after my husband had been dead a while, I got a bank statement and found out he'd been using the convenient checks that Bank of America sends to you, unasked, unwanted. And I told this man, put those in the shredder, please, because I don't want to use them. And I'm sure that's when he kept them. Plus, I had moved into this skilled nursing facility, and I wanted my mail forwarded there, and I asked him to forward it. Evidently, he didn't, because I got no mail, until my son asked me, Mom, what's wrong with your mail? And I phoned and got copies of sixteen convenience checks totaling almost twenty thousand dollars. And I asked him when he came to see me. I said, this looks like you're writing, and you signed the checks, and that is not my writing. And he said to me, Mom, I thought you were gonna die. I did it because it was so easy. And instead of dying, you're better. He had the nerve to say that to my face. And that's when I decided it was time to do whatever I could to help somebody else, because I've always been a strong person, and I fell for it all. All the help, all the concern. I considered him my adopted son. I had him in my will. Not only is it elder abuse, it's financial abuse. Eventually, the Bank of America reduced the interest that they had charged, eighteen percent. And my son had been scraping his checking account in mind to pay the bill every month. He wanted to pay me back at three hundred dollars a month, and I refused to take. And he said, what are you gonna do? I said, I don't know, but I'll let you know. I'm gonna think it over. The next day, I called him and told him, please don't come over anymore. I'm gonna have to do something about this. And that's when I reported it. And this is when I started to get all this help and support from the people I named. Lady named Jody is in charge of affairs at the convalescent, at the skilled nursing facility, and she is a marvel at help to everybody. I think I've just about run out with my notes. I'm here because I firmly believe in what I'm telling you, that if anybody can stop this, you people will do it. If you treat everybody the way you did me, it's great with the help and support, and I want you to know I appreciate it more than I can tell you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll present you this resolution, and it obviously is a tremendous team effort. We thank all the people that assist in this effort, and it is unfortunately very needed and very appreciative.
Supervisor Parks, if I could, that is just obviously another appropriate time for us to remind everybody that anybody out there could volunteer to be a senior ombudsman, and with Sylvia through the Long Term Care Ombudsman Program. Sylvia, I want you to stand up in case there's anybody in the audience. And those are people that go into the skilled nursing facilities and literally try to talk with people and find out about these things, so that they can alert the district attorney, alert the appropriate authorities. So they're volunteers that check in all the time on all kinds of abuse out there. So if you're interested, we need more volunteers. We need people to do that. They do a great job. It's all a volunteer program. And talk to Sylvia if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, the number to report abuse of elder independent adults is eight oh five six five four three two zero zero.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Long.
You can also call two one one, and that's an easy one to get out to the community to remember, to be able to get access to the same agencies and support that's needed. It's more than just a crime and a sin. It's one of those, adult abuse and elder abuse is just unspeakable in words when you run across cases like we heard this morning, and also having dealt with a personal family matter. It's very, very challenging to be able to work through the system unless the system works with you. And when it works well, it really takes a lot of, a lot of the emotional trauma off of the abuse victim and helps them to regain their lives. So it's a wonderful, wonderful cooperative work that's done with our agencies and the advocates and the supporters, and it's truly appreciated.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Long, too, for pointing out the two one one, whether it's child abuse, elder abuse, anywhere, you can connect into the system through two one one and get the referrals. So it's nice and an easy number to remember. Thank you for coming and bringing up your story for us.
Thank you.
After each one of our resolutions this morning, we have Carol Dean Williams submitting a card. So Mr. Williams, item twenty-two.
Carol Dean Williams, almost sixty-one-year resident. A very sad story, but I guess a very real one. And it recalls to my mind that even God had to make a commandment to honor your mother and your father. And maybe the board ought to take a lesson from this. And that word honor meant they had to provide for their financial support in their old age, not to steal their money from them. So maybe the board ought to consider that God even had to deal with this issue. Thank you.
Our next nine thirty time certain item is a proclamation appropriately declaring May 2006 Older Americans Month. And the proclamation reads, Ventura County is home to more than a hundred and seven thousand citizens aged sixty years or older. The older citizens of Ventura County are representative of an unprecedented trend in the nation's demographic makeup. Older persons are as citizens and community members entitled to lives of dignity and independence, free from the fears, myths, and misconceptions about aging. Whereas as Americans grow older, each community must strive to understand and address the evolving challenges and needs of our older citizens and the people who care for them. Whereas our society is dependent upon the nurturing, support, and resources shared between generations, and benefits from our mutual efforts to meet the needs of America's older persons and those who love them. Now, therefore, the board resolves that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors proclaims the month of May 2006 as Older Americans Month, and urges the residents of Ventura County to join with the Area Agency on Aging in recognizing our older citizens, celebrating their many contributions, and assisting them in meeting their needs. And Victoria Jump with our Area Agency on Aging, I believe, is here this morning, along with Arnold Robles, our Advisory Council Chair. And I'll bring this resolution down, and if you'd like to give us some words, we'd be most interested.
Good morning, Board. How are you today?
I'll present this to you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service and your volunteer efforts on behalf of our seniors in Ventura County.
Thank you very much. I receive this on behalf of the thirty-six members of our board who represent different agencies in the county, as well as many of the city governments. Some of the outstanding things that we've just accomplished in our fine-tuning is that of the Senior Nutrition Program. We've made some dramatic changes, and we are in the process of fine-tuning, and it's growing every day, and we look forward to its continuous growth. The other area that we are adventuring into at this time, and that is with the help of the Pepperdine University, is preparing for the baby boomers. And the questions are, are we prepared? We are looking forward to the baby boomers at the rate of six thousand a month or a day coming into senior age. And it won't be long before they're here. And do we have the capabilities of handling this increase in our community? So that's one of the areas that we're looking at very seriously. The other, of course, is that we are looking at senior safety. Having just experienced Katrina, and the majority of the people that were killed in that particular program were seniors, and we're saying to ourselves, are we prepared in our own local communities? So those are the areas that we're adventuring into, and with your continued support, we feel it will be very successful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our third nine thirty time certain is our Peace Officers Memorial Week. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course. Carol Dean Williams.
Carol Dean Williams, I don't know if I like this word, older Americans. I feel younger than I've ever felt in my whole life. So this word, older, folks, we need to be creative and use the wisdom that we've gained. Don't ever call me older American. I'm as young as can be.
Okay. And you still have one more minute left for your day. Our next item, then, is the resolution of the Board of Supervisors declaring May fourteenth through twentieth Peace Officers Memorial Week. And I'd like to read this, and I know that we also have Jim Richardson here, the President of the National Park Services. Does that, that works? Thank you. Sometimes we don't recognize the fact that even our park rangers are out there protecting the peace and making sure that people are meeting our laws. And it says, whereas on October first, nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy established May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week containing May fifteenth as National Police Week. And whereas National Police Week provides an opportunity for citizens to understand and honor the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their peace officers. And whereas National Police Week also provides an opportunity for members of our distinguished law enforcement agencies to celebrate their role in serving the people through safeguarding life and property and protecting against violence and disorder. Whereas peace officers and law enforcement agencies provide a vital public service to the Ventura County community by safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens. And whereas at ten AM on May eighteenth, two thousand six, at the Ventura County Government Center's Peace Officer Memorial Site, there will be a peace officer memorial service held in honor of the courageous men and women who have lost their lives in the line of duty while serving the residents of Ventura County. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim May fourteenth through twentieth, two thousand six, as Peace Officers Memorial Week in the County of Ventura, and invites all residents to join in honoring the peace officers of Ventura County who preserve the safety and security of our communities. I know a lot of us will be attending that. Be it further resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisor calls upon its residents to observe Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand six, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deed have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and to pay respect to the survivors of our fallen officers, and is presented this day, the sixteenth of May. And I'll present it to you if you'd like to come to the mic. Thank you, Mr. Richardson, for coming and accepting this on behalf of all the national peace officers. And if you'd like to make some comments, we'd most welcome them.
I would just like to invite everyone to the memorial service at ten AM on Thursday, just across the lawn, and honoring our fallen officers. Thank you.
Supervisor Michaels has the next resolution.
Yes, thank you. This is Carol Dean Williams. You forgot to remind me you had a card. This is item twenty-four, and then we'll move on to our last time certain.
And how much time do I have?
You have a minute and nine seconds.
A minute and nine seconds?
Yes.
Thank you. Carol Dean Williams, almost sixty-one-year resident of Ventura. Come Thursday, I would like to call special attention to one of the names on the memorial, Dee Dowell. As God is my witness, and in front of all these witnesses, I have concrete evidence that he was murdered. And that murder is being covered up, and there is no statute of limitations on murder. And since our district attorney is present, I'd like for him to take note of this. There is no statute of limitations on murder. Dee Dowell.
That leaves you twenty seconds for your last card. And now Supervisor Michaels, and she's going to help us celebrate Military Appreciation Month.
Absolutely. And no one appreciates it more than I do, since I'm married to a retired military officer, Air Force pilot. It's critical, especially during this week, that we all take a couple minutes, stop and think about whatever it is you're doing. We're doing it because the men and women in uniform are putting themselves in harm's way to protect the rights and the freedoms that we have. We don't often stop and think in this country what it's taken to get us this far. And we have people who exercise their freedom of speech rights in strange ways. There was one Friday that was a little odd. Somebody showed up in a chicken suit at the groundbreaking. But no matter what we do as upstanding or silly citizens, a young man or a young woman in uniform has given us that privilege. And we have with us today, I see Captain Steve Worsham from Naval Base Ventura County, home of the Seabees. Love 'em, love 'em. And I will let him introduce those that he has with him. And also George Compton, who is our VA, Veterans, VA, our Veterans Services Director. I want to read this, and then I'm going to come down and hopefully be allowed to shake the hands of the fellows I see in uniform. And I hope that as this day goes on, each of you in this audience, if you happen to run across a service member, just walk up and say thank you for what you're doing, and think about them and their families. Okay, May 2006, Military Appreciation Month. Whereas George Washington created the Purple Heart Award during the Revolutionary War to honor soldiers who distinguished themselves on the battlefield, and as the first military award in the United States, the Purple Heart continues to reflect the profile of George Washington. Since nineteen seventeen, the Purple Heart has been awarded to any member of one of the branches of the United States Armed Services who has been killed or wounded in any action against an enemy of the United States. Citizens of Ventura County have honorably served the United States, in the United States Armed Forces, in every conflict, from World War I to the current war on terrorism. And with that distinguished service and the dangers that are inherent in combat, there are many of those veterans who wear the Purple Heart. Many military personnel who live and train at Naval Base Ventura County have been called to serve in combat situations and have earned the Purple Heart, and Ventura County is deeply respected. respectful of their noble service. The recipients of the Purple Heart in this chamber today have the greatest understanding of the meaning of the Purple Heart, which has been presented to families of those comrades who did not return. And they understand what it means to say, "All gave some, some gave all." Now therefore, let be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County does hereby proclaim May two thousand and six as Military Appreciation Month in Ventura County, and honors those active-duty service members and veterans who have been awarded the Purple Heart, presented this day, May sixteenth. George, if you'd like to start, I will bring it down.
Thank you Supervisor Michael. It's a real honor to be able to stand here again and represent the veterans of Ventura County. It's been a very interesting year for us with what's going on in Iraq and Afghanistan. And we're starting to see those veterans come back. And fortunately, we've been able to do all those things we can for them. But first, I'd like to introduce Captain Steve Worthing.
Thank you Supervisor Michael, Supervisors. I'd like to just briefly recognize and introduce Master Chief Yingling and Chief Petty Officer Williams. These two gentlemen were injured in an indirect fire incident in Fallujah, Iraq, and they represent fifty-four United States Navy Seabees who've either been killed or wounded in action in Operation Iraqi Freedom and have been awarded the Purple Heart. The Seabees from Port Weneme continue to support the global war on terrorism and Operation Iraqi Freedom and are deployed around the world today, throughout Iraq, Afghanistan, Kuwait, Djibouti, and dozens of other locations around the world. And I would like to say thank you to the great support we get here at home. We are very proud to call this the home of the Pacific Seabees. So thank you very much.
We're very proud that you call it the Pacific Seabees.
I'd now like to introduce Dr. John Williams from the Military Order of the Purple Heart. John?
Good morning. First of all, I want to express my heartfelt thanks and appreciation for the county having the wisdom and the foresight to have such an awesome veteran service officer who's a member of our chapter, and I think does a absolutely heroic job representing the interests and rights of the veterans in Ventura County. Thank you very much, Colonel Compton. May I have the recipients of Purple Hearts in the audience stand, please? The Purple Heart Medal is a very near and dear award. It's, first of all, the color purple represents the most noblest of colors, the regal and noble color, the highest in the order of colors. The heart is our most treasured organ, certainly in the male species gets a lot more blood than the brain. But the heart represents the soul and the center of our body and existence. The Purple Heart Medal is a very small award on behalf of the country to recognize sacrifices and services to the country. Just very, very briefly, and this has been a long morning already, and I don't want to carry on too long, but in World War II, we had approximately fifteen million people in uniform out of a country of around a hundred million. So everyone had a brother, an uncle, a cousin, a family member who was directly involved in a very global and national effort. In Korea, that number shrank to about three million plus or minus servicemen. And in my era, the Vietnam era, about two-point-seven million members went to Vietnam. Gulf War I, it was about five-hundred thousand. And Gulf War II, the current conflict, at any given time, it's about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty thousand out of a country of three-hundred million. Our armed forces now represents a little under three million out of a country of three-hundred million. So a lot of disabled and wounded veterans are here in the county. They're kind of silent. People don't think about them, don't realize they're here. And there's less of a connection with the community than there was sixty years ago in World War II. Regardless of the politics involved of going to fight battle for your country, and certainly the ten years spent in Vietnam represents issues with about our national leaders sending troops afar to fight battles. Regardless of these issues, the patriotism, the heroism, and the duty of these soldiers was never questioned. In my particular case, I was a career Army officer, but I was never very good at it because I got shot three times. So my career in the military changed to another career. Couple months ago, I was at a luncheon with Roger Staubach, the Hall of Fame Dallas Cowboys' quarterback, the nineteen sixty-three Heisman Trophy winner at the Naval Academy, who did serve four years of active duty in the Navy. When I was at Tripler for eight months and twenty-three surgeries, one of my good friends was a Navy Lieutenant, a supply officer, who had been shot by a sniper and lost his right arm above his elbow. So after Roger had given his remarks in Los Angeles a couple months ago, I went up and I said, "You know, forty years ago, I was at Tripler in Honolulu, and one of my good friends was a Navy Lieutenant." And he said, "Andy Hovola?" He said, "Yeah." He said, "I got to Vietnam, and my commander said, 'The guy you're replacing, two days ago, was shot and lost his right arm above his elbow.'" So here's a Hall of Fame quarterback who recognized the perils of being in combat. The wonderful guy who took over my company in Vietnam in the Hundred and First was a six-foot-four Ranger, who, six weeks after taking command of the company I had commanded, was blown up, lost both legs and an arm. He fortunately had married his college sweetheart, who was a physical therapist. And on R and R prior to this incident, she said, "You know, the most appreciative patients I work with are the amputees." So when he returned home with these grievous injuries, they had a magnificent life. He became National Commander of the Disabled American Veterans, gave speeches in all fifty states, honored at the White House several times, flies his own aircraft. We remain close friends. So regardless of the injuries sustained, life goes on. We who've seen the battle are certainly, and it always annoys me, that the general public who've never seen war tend to be the most vocal about being against war. The people who are most against war are the warriors who've actually seen the results of war. It's a very close and personal thing to recover from injuries. And we, as an organization, the Purple Heart Group, particularly here in Ventura County, are extraordinarily appreciative of your recognition of our past and your willingness to continue to support us with George Compton at the Veteran Services Offices, which I'm sure is a very tiny, minuscule portion of your budget, but each and every one of us represents an enormously important part of our lives. Thank you very much.
Why don't we get all the Purple Hearts of the United States in their uniform? Come on up, please. We'll get a picture of everyone.
We can try starting that corner button. We've got a lot of guys.
Oh, we'll do it. Come on. We've done this before. Does the board like one to come down? Come on down. Okay, guys, we're gonna have to, again, act like you know what's in Washington. Remember each other from combat? It's kind of like, remember those quarters, how small they were? That little bunk that you had to fit your body in? I don't want to cover you guys. Is there Kathy?
All right, does anybody want to smile? I mean, really smile. All right, how about an R and R question? Good.
Carol Dean Williams, number twenty, item twenty-five, you wanted to use up your last twenty seconds?
Carol Dean Williams, I'd like for the military to take back to their Commander-in-Chief that they're honored fifty-two weeks a year by the person brave enough to exercise his First Amendment rights every Tuesday at this board meeting. And he has been opposed at every avenue to do that, but like the military, I just dug my foxhole and I'm dug in.
And your time is up. Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda is our ten a.m. time certain. And Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. And it's a real pleasure to invite up to the podium the National Park Services Chief of Natural Resources, Kate Faulkner, who has a presentation about the first bald eagle chicks born on the Channel Islands in the last fifty years. Remarkable achievement, and I'll turn it over to you, Kate.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for inviting me, and we appreciate the support of Ventura County Supervisors Board. I did bring a video of the chick, but I'm going to start with a short PowerPoint presentation so I can bring you up to date on how we got to where we're at. So Supervisor Bennett said, it's been fifty years since bald eagles were successfully hatched on the Channel Islands. Bald eagles used to be very common here. This was the last chick. This was a chick born on Anacapa Island in nineteen forty-nine, and that's the last known successful nest. The reason why we lost bald eagles from this area, and also almost lost California ground pelicans, was because of DDT. It was manufactured in Southern California. A tremendous amount of it was dumped in the ocean off of Southern California, and some of it is still in the ecosystem here, and it's still affecting species like bald eagles. Bald eagles have recovered elsewhere in the United States, but they've been slow to recover here in Southern California. So what we've been doing for the last four years, because we think, because we've been thirty years since DDT was manufactured, we're hoping that we could, once again, reestablish bald eagles. We started a program of bringing young bald eagle chicks, and these birds here are about eight weeks old, and we've been bringing them out to Santa Cruz Island and putting them into what we call hack towers. And they're there for a month before they're able to fly. And so here's some birds where we've just opened the doors to the hack tower, and they've gone out on the porch for the first time, kind of checking out their wings. And some of the birds, they come out on the porch and they just take right off. Others kind of look down and go, "Not ready." And it might take them a couple days to actually fly. But at this point, we've introduced over forty bald eagles in this banner to the Northern Islands. And each bird, before it's released, is fitted with a backpack transmitter, which you can see here, just a small GPS transmitter, so we can follow their movements. And each bird also has a wing tag, and the birds that come from our release all have blue wing tags. And as a result of that, we can follow the movements of the birds. And so even though all the releases are happening from right in this area on Santa Cruz Island, the birds travel all over the place. And so they're going to all the Northern Islands. And of course, the one island that's in Ventura County is Anacapa Island, and it's very popular with the bald eagles. Last week, we had nine bald eagles on that island. And they seem to be feeding on the gulls there, which almost everybody thinks is a good thing. So we're returning this natural predator back to the ecosystem. And the birds also fly to the mainland. And so you can see here the movements of several of the birds that have come to the mainland and traveled all over the western United States. This is a natural thing for them to do during the four to five years that they're maturing. They travel around, and often then they return back to their home territory to establish a nest. And that is what's happened here. This is the first nest. As you can see, this bird here has an orange wing tag, and that's because it came from Catalina Island, traveled around the mainland U.S., and eventually this pair met up on Santa Cruz Island and established this nest on the north side of the island. We've also been working with the Ventura County Office of Education. The exciting news is that by the end of this week, we think that they're going to have a live video cam operating on this nest. And so they've just been excellent partners. They're helping to bring a number of the programs on the islands to the mainland to get into the school district here. So I'll keep you apprised as to whether or not we get this up and running, but they've been schlepping some pretty heavy equipment up the hill to the vicinity of this nest. We also have a second nest that did hatch a chick also just two weeks ago. This one's on the ground, which is very unusual, on the south side of Santa Cruz Island. And it's just very hard to get close to this nest, and we don't have very good pictures yet of the chick. So with that, I'll move to the video, and if you have any questions too, I can answer any questions that you might have. So it's a short video. What I'm going to show you is the chick when shortly after it was first hatched, and then move forward to how it looks today. So here's the two adults on the nest. They're both from Catalina. These bald eagles mate for life, and so these birds will probably be using this nest for many, many years. So there was the chick when it was just two days old, and the adults are just starting to feed this chick. And so you can see they're feeding them fish, and largely they feed on fish, seabirds, and seal and sea lion carcasses. So these are young birds. This is the male here. He's number ten. And he's a five-year-old bird. And the female is a four-year-old bird, which is actually a little bit young. These birds, now here, okay, so now we move forward. This is, now the chick is ten days old. So you can see they grow very quickly. And the adults, at this stage, too, the adults, one of the adults was always with the chick. And now, okay, now we move to just last week. So he's lost, starting to lose a little bit of the cuteness. And he's very vocal, too. He's always asking for food. And so this was just shot when the bird is about a month old. You see, it has huge feet at this point. And the adults will often leave it alone now sometimes. But if anyone who wants to go out to the Channel Islands, Island Packers, takes excellent trips out to all the islands, I know I often hear from people in Ventura County that have never been out to the Channel Islands. Wonderful place to visit. This nest and these adults are actually very visible to visitors. They're often seeing them now along the north shore of Santa Cruz Island. So we're just very pleased, and we think that this is an indicator that many of our restoration efforts on the Channel Islands are moving in the right direction. And I've brought some materials, some background materials. And I've brought some materials, some background materials for all of you, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Supervisor Michael.
We visited some areas up in Alaska where the bald eagles are actually very active and very healthy. I've never seen an eagle nest on the ground. Is that not wildly common, but is that usual, or is it because the birds were in captivity?
It's pretty unusual. This is actually only the second ground nest that we know of in the contiguous states, lower 48. It does happen in Alaska on the Aleutian Islands because there's no trees there. On the Channel Islands, they'll nest on cliffs and places like that, but it is not real typical just to have them out in the open like that, and we don't know why they decided to do that.
Only they know why they decided to do that.
We're hoping they're successful. There's some risk with being on the ground because predators can come get the nest. But actually, this other nest on the north side is about 30 feet in the air, and this chick goes very close to the edge, and so I think I'm more nervous about the chick falling out, and I wish they all had ground nests.
Well, how do they fledge if they're on the ground? Because I know we had the privilege, just by luck, of watching a young eagle fledge, and Mom actually ended up kicking him out. He'd been trying for two or three days, according to the boat captain, and that day, he got a gentle nudge and was just fine. Or she, I don't know.
Their first flights are pretty comical.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this bird, it'll figure it out. When they're about three months old, they're as big as adults. So this bird's growing really quickly, and about two months will be adult size, and that's about when they start to fly.
They're amazing, just amazing.
I got to watch some of the program that they're doing out there in Santa Cruz, going out there and taking a look, but what amazed me was to see that these birds do fly, you know, all the way to Wyoming, and they came almost all the way back to Santa Barbara. And how old are they when they start flying that long distance? Do you know?
Yeah, we've had birds as young as four months make the crossing, but some of them have not made it successfully. And we don't know what drives them to do that because there's plenty of food on the Channel Islands, but they just seem to have this desire to travel. And mortality in the first year can be as high as 50%, so they don't always make the best decisions. But a number of them have made it to the mainland, moved all over the Western U.S., and then come back to the island. And that's true of these two birds from Catalina. They traveled around the Western United States and then came over to Santa Cruz Island and found the territory where they wanted to build a nest.
Congratulations.
Typical of our young people. They go out and travel around and then finally settle down, so.
If they can afford it.
One, I'd just like to thank you for taking the time to come down and inform us of this. We have a lot of other issues that we deal with the Channel Islands and to see sort of the end result of a lot of good work out there. The second thing is congratulations, because I think all of us recognize that bald eagles are the top of the food chain on the Channel Islands, and you can't restore the ecosystem properly until you have the top of the food chain reestablished. And so this is a symbol and a sign of a lot of other work that we haven't all been privy to or aware of in terms of trying to restore the natural environment there on Channel Islands. So congratulations for pulling that off. I know you've got a complicated issue, for example, between the golden eagles and the bald eagles. The bald eagles don't tolerate the golden eagles and will drive the golden eagles away. The golden eagles are not natural to the Channel Islands, and they've been eating the foxes, and so the bald eagles actually will help the fox population because they'll get rid of the golden eagles, you know, just as an example. And I know you've got many other things in wearing your hat as chief resource person there, and so you've got a lot of other interactions going on, but congratulations for this. And keep us posted. And there's a second chick. The second chick has been hatched and is held.
The second chick's about a week and a half old now. Yeah, so it's a little bit further behind. Yeah, so we're hopeful. Thank you.
Good. And how would people watch the streaming video that'll come from the county?
It doesn't have it on yet.
They don't have it on yet.
I know.
It could be up as quick as tomorrow. My understanding from the county, because these bald eagle cams are so popular, they're actually having to do something to protect the security of their server so that if they get a lot of hits, it doesn't bring it down. So I think that they're working on that right now, and it could be up as soon as tomorrow.
Be county of education site, though? That would be the site? Where will people go?
I don't know. I don't, it is at the county server, but I don't know what the address will be. And I know that their primary interest has been to bring this into the school system, so it will be on Internet too eventually. So since these birds will continue to use this nest, we're looking at this as a long-term thing, so hopefully every year, now that it's set up, we'll be able to, you know, start right from the beginning with this webcam operating.
Can you imagine how many people will be watching the site when that bird is getting ready to fly?
Oh, yeah.
Because at some point in time, people are going to see that bird hop out of there for the first time.
Yeah, this will be fun. So I will let you know as soon as I find out how we can actually watch it.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that completes our regular public session, and we have one more item out in our closed session that we'll go to. So with that, we'll adjourn to our closed session and then to our next meeting. Thank you.
Just don't blame me when you guys are all started. We should, we just have employee issues.
That should be okay.